Hi, I'd like to call the meeting of the Newmarket Town Council to order. Can we prepare? So the first thing tonight is our public forum. And is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public forum at seven. The next item that we have on the agenda is a hearing, a public hearing for ordinance number one, 2019-2020 indemnification of officials. And is there, did you want to?
This is sort of a, it's an ordinance to clean up something that we realized. There's another community going through this recently where a member of the board was being sued and there's questions whether or not the town would cover their legal fees because it wasn't, it was part of their duties and it wasn't being malicious when they're acting that way. That the town, it's pretty given or common practice that the municipality covers the official in those situations. However, unless you adopted the provision of our save thirty-one, one oh five, it doesn't mean you automatically get it and it has to be a vote of the council to indemnify them. We, the town attorney and I both looked at the town charter, there is, well, there's a provision in there of identifying individuals. We thought it'd be just as safe to specifically state that the council adopts the provisions of our save thirty-one, one oh five. So basically unless it's malicious or negligence, local officials doing their, in their regular role, we will cover them for their, any actions they take. What you're seeing a lot of now are people, I'm trying to remember, sovereign citizens, which are individuals who will just randomly sue municipal officials due to their actions, including putting liens on their properties and other items. And it sometimes becomes difficult for the municipal officials. But this will be one of the ways that we can protect individuals.
Great, so with that, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Then I will close the public hearing at seven oh three. Great. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes from our January fifteenth, twenty-twenty meeting, and I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January fifteenth, twenty-twenty meeting.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Cast. Did you, was that?
For a correction.
Oh, that was for the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Perfect. Did you want to go ahead?
Sure. So on row eighty-nine, it says, well, I'll read the, from the beginning on row eighty-eight, so it just makes sense. Counselor Cast says, said she understands that this time the town is not ending their relationship to share facilities, period. And I didn't have time to go back and look at the tape, so I don't know if it wasn't real clear. I would definitely have meant facilities director. So I just want to make sure that's clear, whether the minutes get amended or not, so.
That's a good, good correction. Counselor Dumas?
Yes, please. I need to make a line correction on line number one ninety-two. I was reading a letter at the previous meeting. The end of one ninety-two should read, removing a head of tide dam is there, so striking the knot. So the whole sentence should say, she asked what companies based their figures on, what was being compromised by cutting the bid by two hundred thousand dollars, why more time was not taken to address fears about removing the dam, and set the environmental support for removing a head of tide dam is there.
Great. Seeing no other corrections, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumas.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Oh.
I'm sorry, got a little bit.
Sorry.
Yeah. Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Oh, sorry, that was my mistake. Counselor Kuiper is excused this evening. Next, ah, next item is, yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, and not in my written report, you may have heard that the Department of Environmental Services with EPA has released a new draft permit for the wastewater facilities along Great Bay. It's, while it's being touted as a positive from the DES and the governor's office, the municipalities that are affected by this are not too keen on it. This would already, this would impact us seriously as we've already entered into administrative consent, that we would try to get down to an eight, then a five, but within reasonable science. What they're saying now is instead of looking at individuals, they're going to give a blanket permit for every municipal, every municipality out of the bay. Problem there is we also all get the same load. So say if it's a hundred, and I get, you know, I don't get the numbers off the top of my head, but if it's a certain amount and if one community uses up most of that, then we lose it. So we effectively almost stop development in other municipalities if one were to do that. Those who are impacted, and we'll see if we can figure out which ones are going to impact us the most, Portsmouth, P's, Rochester, Dover, some, Durham, Epping, us, Newfield, it's the twelve smaller ones. But if there's extra development in P's, then that could impact us. Our legal counsel retired that we previously had for the administrative order consent. I'm working with the, since Exeter and Newmarket are very similar, administrative order consents and permits, almost exactly similar because we have the same legal counsel, we're going to work together with the same, we're trying to hire a new legal counsel as of now, to keep the council abreast of what's going on. We have to submit written testimony by, it's March ninth, and there's a public hearing on February nineteenth. So we're trying to get the legal, the legal counsel on board before then, just keep the council informed of what's going on. On a positive note, on Friday, January thirty-first, I attended the annual meeting of the Nature Conservancy to accept their conservation partner award on behalf of the town. They presented us with our efforts working with them to reconstruct the culvert of the Leveling Creek. They're very impressed with the town's planning and public works department, and I want to publicly acknowledge both those departments. They could not say enough, and concerned the public works directors here, about the public works department, the director, and all the work that the staff did there. One of the comments they made was, you know, they, one of the members of the public work staff and said, the person who worked there was so happy doing this project, it was not the normal thing they do. And they felt that the town employees were really proud of the effort that they did there, and they should be. And the Nature Conservancy was very happy with everything that the town did with them. The award is in my office right now, and we'll be displaying it shortly. Just an update on our expenses and revenues. So halfway through the year, I, we have expended fifty-five percent of the budget, which is normal. There's a lot of things that we spent, we have to purchase at the beginning of the year, insurance, transfers to capital reserve funds, that impact the budget. Some of the areas of concern, which I don't think would be a surprise to the council, the finance department. We were originally contracting with the school district, with the finance director, at the time the budget was passed, so since the breakup of that, shared services agreement, we have to contract with Municipal Resources, Inc., and so that we have to basically have a full-time individual, which we will have a full-time individual as a staff person, so I'm going to see how it reaches there. The other is in IT, we're just seeing some of that as well. We are contracting that out, but we're just seeing with some of the pay for the combined director, CFO, IT, paying some of that from there as well. The contract service is actually working, just to let everyone know it's working very well. We get a response time within twenty minutes from somebody on the Back Bay staff, to everything from, we just, every computer now is a little message system that you can type in saying you have an issue, to callbacks or coming to the, I think the maximum is four hours response time to come to onsite, but it's very rare we actually need them onsite. So it's been pretty good. For revenues, we've actually on schedule with fifty-two percent collected. Motor vehicle registrations are up fifty-four percent, at fifty-four percent, and building permits are right on at fifty percent. We were just concerned with some of the softening of the economy that we're hearing, how it would impact us. The next item is that we've been notified by Comcast that they would like to begin to renegotiate our cable franchise, which is set to expire in two thousand twenty-two. I'm notified our town attorney on this, and we'll be in the process of the ascertaining. The future cable really needs and interests the community in individuals, town departments, the schools, and other institutions, and should provide information on that topic. While we, we say we renegotiated cable franchise agreement, there's very little, we actually can legally negotiate, because you can't negotiate two things that everybody cares about, rates and lineups. What else is out there? Not a lot. And the FCC is ruling more and more in favor of the cable companies due to the cutting of the cords, so we're seeing that impact us as well. But that's all I've typed in my written report.
Not seeing any comments, so, one of the things that, I'll just quickly, that I think, if I'm wrong, tell me, that we negotiate with the, with our, that contract is some funds for Channel thirteen, is that correct?
We are allowed to charge a cable franchise fee to the cable companies. What that is, is we're allowed to charge up to five percent of the total cable portion of the bill for the use of our right-of-way. So they have their cables in our right-of-way, so we're allowed to charge up to five percent. We do, that's as much as we can, so we can't charge anymore.
So there's no negotiating?
There's not. And, I mean, the good thing is recently, the first municipality in New Hampshire has, have competition. Rochester has two cable companies now. They have, with Comcast recently entering the market, that Metrocast. So hopefully, if one's going one way, then they'll come the other way. So we'll continue to look at that as well. But if another company were to come into town, we would also negotiate a franchise agreement with them.
The next item on our agenda is committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Counselor Cast?
Let's see, from the planning board, just wanted to report that the Water Resources Master Plan Chapter Committee, I'm not sure what the, we just meet. Then on the twenty-third, and the first part of the chapter review is, I would say is complete, and the next meeting will be to go over the second, second half of the chapter. I would say the direction that's being taken is just to refine the focus on drinking water, eliminating a lot of extra materials, then also adding in a lot of data that might be pertinent to a drinking water chapter, and references directly related to that. So that's what's going on with that. I wanted to bring up another topic. I was, started with me being approached as a town council member by a resident couple who wanted to build an ADU in a detached building, not going to be able to because Newmarket doesn't, hasn't adopted that option. So I told them I'd look into it, and it actually turned out that the best course was to just check with the planning board, and I talked about the chair and the vice chair, Eric and Val, and they're both open to the planning board revisiting that topic. And my question is basically, you know, are we open to allowing detached and under what circumstances? And I, and that's, I think, pretty clearly a job for the planning board to come up with a recommendation of the council. But it's some work to do that. It's not just, yes, we'll allow detached, it's not as simple as that, there's a lot of things to consider. So they want, they asked me to ask the council for the council's support to do that work before they go forward. So I don't know how I, how we get the council's pleasure, I don't know whether we need a vote or you just all nod your heads or speak down or forever hold your peace.
I'm not sure that we can, I don't know.
I guess, what are you looking?
So when I, when I asked, when I asked the planning board chair and vice chair, what does the, you know, what's the next step? They said, we can go forward, we're happy to go forward, but we'd just like to make sure that we, I think they just want to make sure they're aligned with what the whole council wants and not just me. So they, they're just looking to make sure they're.
But the issue is the council doesn't know what you, you don't want to commit to something until you see it.
Not committing.
Are they looking for just our, yeah, go ahead and look into it, kind of?
So what I.
You can't take a vote on something.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they would probably have to look at coming up with a recommendation to the council to change the ordinance. So they just want to make sure that they're aligned with the council in that direction. Whereas if they go and do all the work to come up with a recommendation, the majority of the council isn't already opposed to it, I guess.
I think we don't know.
One at a time.
Proceededly, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the role of the council representative to the planning board.
Okay.
That, you know, once you start seeing it, you come back and forth with reports and say, you know, at that point, the council, you'd say, you know what, the council thinks you're going the wrong way. And, you know, then come back with another reporter, you know, that kind of back and forth. But it's, it's usually you see something before you commit.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay. Is this for, regarding this question?
Or the topic.
Yeah.
Counselor Cast had actually sent a similar query with some information to me about a week or so ago, just asking, how I feel about property rights. And I do think, just in general, I think it's worth the planning board taking a look at. I think that it might open up some good opportunities for our homeowners here in town, and at least, you know, from my side, I would love to see the planning board to step forward and start working on that, but.
Counselor Finch?
And again, I think I would also express interest in seeing progress in that or seeing a discussion, because I think the, my understanding was the planning board was reluctant to even bring it up again because they thought from years ago, they assumed the council was similar, so I think it's worth revisiting, for sure.
I think that might be where they're coming from.
Yep. Yeah.
Counselor Burns?
Yeah, I just share that as well. I mean, I think it would be good to revisit it, and then we can take, they can take it from there, propose.
One of the, the things that I think is important is shortly before the meeting, you had sent this email. And so I think educating the council, the first step actually, is that we need to educate the council even about what, what these are, not everyone might understand all the ins and outs. And so if we, I think, could start that process, I think it would make a lot of sense in conjunction with the work that the planning board is doing, so that there's a constant conversation about it.
Mm-hmm.
That, yeah. Because I don't think that we are at a point where we could, we could vote on anything at this point.
No.
Obviously, I mean, we, we don't have anything in front of us, but, but even just without that background information, I think that's the first step. So having this and being able to read through it, and then if people have questions, being able to bring them to you or to whoever the rap is.
Right.
In the future, I think that would be the, the best way to proceed. Any other committee reports? Counselor Cast?
Were there any others?
You can go ahead.
So it's a committee, so it was several meetings ago, and I remembered that we didn't, it was a, I don't remember the name of the committee, but it had to do with the Lambert River.
Thank you.
Right?
The Coastal Resiliency Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Oh, that's what it was, okay.
Yeah. Right? Is that what it was called?
Wrong water body.
It's something, it's similar, it's about, yeah.
Because you are interested, is that why you're bringing this up?
I'm interested, but I'm not going to be able to do it as a council member, obviously. So I guess I will apply later, but I just wanted to.
The commission hasn't met.
Okay.
So you're, you're willing to step into that role?
I'm still interested, yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And then, seeing no other comments there, I, the Energy and Environment Committee did meet last night, and we are working on a few different things. One, we're going to have some changes and some vacancies. It's hard to believe that the committee has been in place now for three years. I don't know how that time has passed so quickly, but, so we have two people who have served their terms and will be stepping down. And then we have another person who's going to be leaving the state, and so she'll need to step down also. So we do have some vacancies, so keep that in mind. With that, one of the things that we talked about last night was working on some structure because I think that we, we need a secretary and, and they probably, you know, I've been the chair since the beginning of the committee, and I think that that, probably some new blood would make sense. So, so that's, that was a big conversation.
Just, do you think it would be beneficial not just for that committee, but for all committees to have a, how to run a meeting session? I could teach a class and.
And how to organize, yeah. I think that, you know, obviously things like the planning board and budget committee are really well established, but some of the other committees, we have a brand-new arts committee, brand-new riverfront advisory committee.
And the problem is, a lot of times when committees are willy-nilly and just let everybody talk and don't take minutes, it's, that's when you get in trouble.
Yep.
And you get sued. You have, that's why you need to have organization, because you are, they are municipal committees. So that's why, then that's why you have, that's why there are rules for meetings.
Exactly.
I think, I'll look at that after the election, to bring all the boards in this, even boards or chairs and say, look, this is, easy, you know, just a quick thing on how to run a meeting.
One of the things that came up actually, and I think that it's worth talking about, we talked organizing Google Docs as very specific mechanisms for organizing agendas and, and minute preparations, and is, what's the, no.
You can't. Technically, if you, if you don't have a rule saying that the chair sets the agenda, and you'll see this at some, I'm the nerdy guy who watches other municipal meetings, councils will adopt the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. Because if they don't want something on there, or they want something changed, they'll change it before then they adopt the agenda. It's like the first action. But our rules say that the chair and the town administrator sets the agenda.
Right.
But yeah, so no, you actually can't, the only thing you can do outside of a meeting is schedule a meeting.
Okay. Technology and.
It does not help.
Right-to-know rules are sort of in conflict. So, the other thing that we were talking about is we have finalized a letter to area businesses regarding EV charging stations, and so it's just really, you know, some information about cost and what the town did, and just a little information for area businesses to consider installing EV charging stations. So we have that ready. The only other thing is we have some documents ready for town meeting day. Just some flyers and things, a flyer about composting, a flyer about EV charger, charging station, and a survey that we want to hand out about glyphosate use. So that's it for the Energy and Environment Committee. Counselor Dumas?
Yes, thank you. I know I've asked this in the past, it was a little short of a timeline, but as we're now, at the beginning of the new year, do we have any data for how our composting, composting program has been going, amounts that we've generated, users, anything like that?
I don't have any data.
Okay, no problem. I, I wasn't sure if it's been actively collected or if we're still just in that interim trial period to see how it's going, but.
We can find out.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It will be a year in April.
Perfect.
So, yeah, so we're, we're right around the year mark.
No. Good deal.
Seeing no other committee reports, we can move on to resolutions in the second reading. And the first is the resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash nineteen, and that's the McAllen Dam Rehab Project, and I would accept a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash nineteen, the McAllen Dam construction services.
Second.
Are you going to?
Yeah, I can speak to it. As the council's aware, the voters approved a bond in March two thousand and nineteen to rehab the McAllen Dam. We went out to bid this fall, and the bid's due on December sixth, and we received, last spring we went out to bid, we received no bids. This fall we went out to bid, received three bids. They were from the T Ford Company, the amount of two million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. New England Infrastructure, which was four million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars, and SNCO for two million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. SNCO being the lowest bid, but over the bond price, amount pursuant to our procurement policy, we were able to negotiate and review the bid to get it underneath our bidding, our bonding amount. So after the reductions, we were able to reduce it by three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. So the bid, the bid came in at one million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. And we are recommending that we award the bid to SNCO to begin this spring, and summer to do this work. It's a very short window because we have to draw down the dam and try to get done as soon as possible.
Counselor Sanders?
I just had a quick question, Steve. When I was looking over the bid forms and the renewed one, that the new one, the revised one they put in, they had two line items, five and six, on left abutment, temporary water control and coffer dams, and then a right abutment. And I noticed they reduced, the biggest reduction comes on line item six, that right abutment, temporary water control. And when I looked at the bid from T Ford, they also had those two items. I was just wondering why that right abutment one was reduced so much? Are they, they kind of just splitting the difference on that between the left and right? I wasn't.
They're going to not use to drive the sheet metal in, they're going to use a sandbag system.
Okay.
And that sheet metal is very, very expensive to.
Okay. But the sandbags. But the sandbags will do an adequate job?
They did not think they could utilize those in this project. And they got that clarification, and that's why...
It just seemed like such a big hit to one light item.
Yeah, it's a big number. It's a really big number.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cast?
So, the original recommendation came from the former facilities director?
That's correct, with the public works director while working with the individual.
So, there was a good handoff and...
Yeah, yeah. It wasn't just left, no.
So, but I mean, I know we're looking for a new facilities director, so...
Yeah, no, the public works, under my authority, the public works director's not going to be overseeing the project.
Okay.
I had had a question.
Okay.
I'm just trying to find the data point. If you could just give me 30 seconds, I'm sorry.
That's why I printed it out, so I could circle things.
Do you want me to move on to someone else?
Yeah, please.
Yep.
Sorry, didn't want the vote to...
Counselor Cast?
So, I'm just going to ask it now, just because of the, just, I'm concerned about it moving forward with, and having, back to my original question about the facilities director. So, I know the staff is handling it. I also had a question about whether, like, the school had a building committee, whether this sort of project also warrants that?
No, we don't do that. Why? We don't, because this would be, you'll get, a committee would be getting into minutia of, usually when you do a school building committee, it's for the educational purposes. Like, do you want to put labs, what kind of labs do you want to have, what kind of, versus a dam, you don't want to argue over whether or not, what kind of cement we're going to pour.
Correct. Understood.
Yeah. It's the engineers oversee it with the public works director.
All right.
The committee handed it off after years of work.
Yes, I know that.
Counselor Dumont?
Thank you. I found the data points I was looking for. I was just kind of curious to know if we could hear regarding item number 13, the pneumatic gate. In the change in bid form from SNCO, we have a total of $362,000. It looks like New England had a price of $600,000 for that line item, and T Ford had $234,000. I'm just kind of curious to know if there were significant differences between what that was including between the three companies. It just seems like such a, you know, from 600 to 300, down to 200.
Do you, like, the public works director, do you have a big difference there? If not, I'll have to go through all those big bid documents and...
Fair enough. I guess, let me rephrase. Was there anything that big that was jumping out in terms of that line item?
Nothing, no red flags.
Okay. That was my concern. But when I see one huge number and one small number from two bids, it just makes me wonder.
No.
Thank you.
And will, I have one question. Will GZA continue to be working on the project?
That's a contract we just signed a week or two ago.
And do they take responsibility for everything?
Yes.
Seeing no other counselors wishing to speak, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Dumont?
No.
Counsel Cast?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes five to one.
The next item is ordinance number one, 2019-2020, indemnification of officials, and I would accept a motion to approve that ordinance.
I'll approve ordinance number one, 2019-2020.
Second.
I think it's important that we have. You know, it's increasingly challenging to get people to run for public office. We're all volunteers. And I think that having the support of the community is, and the safety of the community is really important, to ensure that we have public servants. So, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Cast?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Speaking of public servants, we have three nominations to accept. And the first is Anna Visciano for the, oops, sorry, for the arts and tourism, for the Ad Hoc Arts and Tourism Commission. And I would accept a motion to approve that application.
I'll make a motion to approve Anna Visciano to the Ad Hoc Arts and Tourism Commission.
Second.
Seeing no comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Cast?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And so, the next is Andrew Bergren, and that would be approving his application to the New Market Housing Authority Commission for a three-year term. And I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Andrew Bergren to the New Market Housing Authority Commission.
Second.
And seeing no comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Cast?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And the next is for Deborah Janelle to the Arts and Tourism Ad Hoc Commission. I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Deborah Janelle to the Ad Hoc Arts and Tourism Commission.
Second.
Seeing no comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Cast?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein? Passes six-zero.
And I just want to comment about all three applications, that I'm really thrilled to see these people step up who have never served before. And I think that that's really important. So, it's exciting to, it's exciting to see the arts and tourism positions getting filled. And I think we still have one more, one more, if there's anybody out in the community that's interested in serving, that would be fabulous. And Counsel Burns?
I was going to say the same thing you just said. I'm very excited to see these three step onto some commissions and committees. It's wonderful. Thank you very much.
The next... I'm trying to talk slowly, so I can get my stuff up. The next item that we have, we have our resolutions in the first reading. And the first is Resolution 2019-2020, wastewater treatment facility maintenance, building roof replacement. Whereas, the wastewater treatment facility maintenance building roof is over 30 years old and is leaking. Whereas, the sewer department performed a competitive bid process. And whereas, LGR One Inc. just competitive bid, now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council, that the town council authorizes the town administrator to enter into an agreement with LGR One Inc. to perform the wastewater treatment facility maintenance building roof replacement, and the withdrawal of $64,000 from the sewer department capital reserve funds for this project. First reading, February 5th, 2020. And the second resolution is Resolution 2019-2020-21, Moody Point Water Main Extension Project. Whereas, the Town of New Market Water Department has entered into an agreement with the Moody Point Association to engineer and extend the Bay Road Water Main to the Moody Point Association Water System. And whereas, the Town of New Market will be reimbursed for the project through betterment fees. Whereas, Wright Pierce has performed preliminary engineering for this project. Whereas, the Rural Development has approved Wright Pierce's contract for $138,500 to complete the required engineering for this project. And whereas, the Town of New Market Water Department has secured interim financing from TD Bank for this project, now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council, the town council authorizes the town administrator to enter into an agreement with Wright Pierce to perform the engineering for Moody Point Water Main Extension Project for a sum not to exceed $138,500. First reading, February 5th, 2020. The next item is correspondence to the town council. Has there been any correspondence?
There's none.
And closing comments by town counselors?
I forgot to give an update on something.
Sure.
And I apologize. In your boxes tonight internally, there's a letter from me to the Commissioner of Department of Transportation. When the Water and Sewer Director was looking at doing improvements to South Main Street, which is part of the bond that was adopted last year, we had discussions with the head engineer of District Six for DOT, which oversees our area. And we both agreed that it's probably for the betterment of both the state and the town, that the town take over control of South Main Street, or 152, from the intersection of Route 108 to Grant Road, as well as Jerry Ave. Currently, those are state roads. And we are, we both feel that it's more advantageous for us to take it. They say, you know, it's more of an urban road. And we agree that there's certain things that we'd like to have authority over, but we're not allowed to, including number of driveway cuts, a crosswalk at high school that we had to redo because of the state, those kind of items. I also, in the letter, expressing our interest in taking it over, expressed our interest in creating an urban compact for the Town of New Market. I brought the subject up with your district engineer. He felt that Main Street itself may be an issue, because it's on Route 108. But then I explained that Route 108 is the Main Street for the cities of Dover and Rochester and other communities as well, that I think we could handle it, since we already maintain it for the most part. And I asked that, if we could begin that discussion as well. I just wanted to get the council aware of that, because you probably have an agreement in a few months, asking us to take over the ownership.
Do Dover and Rochester have urban compact?
They do. If you ever notice, when you're, if you drive into Dover, above Hanaford's, there'll be this little green stake, and on it, there's a square, about a few inches by a few inches. On top, it says DOT, and underneath, it just says urban compact. That's the border. Anything inside of that, the city maintains. Outside of that, the state maintains.
Okay.
Exeter has one as well.
No other counselors wishing to speak? Oh, Counsel Sanders?
Just want to remind you, in case anybody needed reminding, Tuesday is the New Hampshire primary. And I'd like to encourage everybody to make their voices heard and get out and vote.
And I would encourage counselors to sign up to work with them.
I did.
Oh, did you? What sheet?
I sent one out this morning.
Oh.
Yeah.
I missed it.
It's on a, it's a Google Doc.
Okay. And along those lines, you know, now we have a slate of candidates for our municipal elections, and those will be happening on March 10th. And there, there aren't a ton of races, you know? I think that for the most part, the positions, there are an equal number of applicants to positions, with the exception of, I believe, Budget Committee is short one potential committee member. So, if anyone's interested in doing a write-in campaign, that would be the appropriate time to do that. If not, they'll probably be appointing someone once they convene in March. So, and then the school board has some races. But for the town positions, they're all pretty even.
Sorry, my thing is, I did actually just kind of want to touch on that. First, write-in campaigns are successful, one and two, both won. They've been great additions to the town council. But speaking to that missing Budget Committee seat, that is one of those committees that, while the meetings may be somewhat tasking, and in some cases confusing, you can have some of the most hands-on effect about how the town is going to move forward in setting its budget, and setting its goals for the next year. You get to hear from CIP, you get to hear from the school, you get to hear from the town. Just being able to be on that committee and ask questions is incredibly important. And I think that, just in my two years alone, I've learned a lot from that. So, I would encourage anybody who has an interest in, you know, trying to help shape the community in a productive way, to step forward and put your name out there.
Counsel Burns?
No, I just have a question. The list of people that have signed up, is that posted on our website? I think you usually do.
I have to check with Sam Clark, obviously she does it.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't think I've seen anything.
Okay.
Going once, going twice. See, no other comments. I will consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you.